For the special council meeting, the Lewisville City Council, it's September fourteenth, twenty twenty one, and then Mayor Ashley Stolzman, they're being being held electronically and being recorded because of COVID nineteen. And there'll be public comment periods tonight that you can participate in by raising your hand by clicking the raise hand feature that you'll find at the bottom of your screen. And you'll have three minutes to tell us what you'd like to tell us. Just tell us your name and your address, and then tell us what you'd like to tell us. And so first we'll have a roll call from our city clerk. City clerk here.
Mayor Proton Maloney.
Here.
Council member Lipton. Council member Lipton.
Here.
Council member Dickinson.
Here.
Council member Fahey.
Here.
Council member Lay.
Here.
Council member Brown.
Here.
Mayor Stolzman.
Here. Thank you, everyone. And so our only item tonight is discussion direction on the manager's proposed budget. So we'll have a brief presentation and then get into council discussion. I'll turn it over to our manager, Megan Davis.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. Nice to see you all. I am going to turn it over to Director Watson. I don't think we'll have a formal presentation. He can just kind of give you an overview of some of the charts that we have in the updated council communication. And then we did have a request for him to be able to show some of these, any of these tables and charts that you might want to see and make changes to it through the model as you go. So if you'd like to do that, he'll be able to, you know, post those so that you can see some kind of just dynamic information with some of your discussion.
Great. Thanks so much. Director Watson, when you're ready, take it away.
Okay, can you hear me okay?
We sure can.
Okay, great. Yeah, just I'll just make a quick note on two changes that we made since the September seventh presentation. First of all, regarding the Capital Projects Fund, we have reinstated the one point five million dollars per year that was previously cut from the pavement booster program to fund the transfers for the debt service on the underpass bonds. It's important to note that the one point five million dollar annual cuts to the pavement booster program were made for twenty twenty two through twenty twenty six to help fund the annual transfers that we had set up from twenty twenty three to twenty twenty six. So the cuts made to the pavement booster program are are for one more year than the proposed transfers to debt service. I should have made this more clear in the previous presentation. I got a call on that today. I just wanted to make that note. So anyway, bottom line is restoration of the cuts add seven point five million dollars of expenditures for the five years in which we've added them back, which results in a projection of negative equity in the Capital Projects Fund that can be seen in the chart on PDF page three of your packet. That's the top of PDF page three. The second significant adjustment that we made to the September seventh presentation pertains to the council's concern of the general funds recurring expenditures exceeding its recurring revenue in the fund forecast chart that we presented on September seven. There are various options to address this imbalance, and those are presented at the bottom of page of page three of your packet. One of those options is to adjust the turnback targets. To give the council an idea as to the sensitivity of the fund forecast model, depending on the turnback percentages, we have slightly increased some of the operational turnback percentages for most of the major operating funds. And then we've calculated new fund forecasts. Those are shown on PDF pages five through seven. So that's kind of the new information that we've added. Staff believes that the the option for increasing the turnback target percentage is reasonable and justified, considering the operating and staffing challenges that are due to the ongoing pandemic. There's three new attachments to the packet. The first is the last attachment is the twenty twenty one, twenty twenty six capital improvements plan as it was presented in the original by any operating and capital budget document. So we put that on there. And then we put the twenty twenty one budget amendment that was presented and adopted on June fifteenth, twenty twenty one. And then we take, then we've added to the packet some CPI or CIP request forms for the new projects that we've added now to the new recommended twenty twenty, new recommended CIP. So those are the the three additional things that were sort of requested by council at the last meeting that we've added as attachments to the council communication. So that's pretty much it for my prepared presentation. As Megan said, I'm prepared to pull up a lot of these charts and adjust on the fly, if you'd like me to do that, and try and answer any questions that you may have. So I'll turn it back over to you and I'll be happy to take any questions.
Thank you. And so for tonight, if we can go through one topic at a time, I think that'll help us and make sure that we give direction on each topic as it goes. So if people, if one person starts off a topic, if everyone else can be respectful and stay on that topic until we complete it, and then we can move to the next topic just through the raise hand feature. So if there's someone who would like to start us off with a topic, please raise your hand, and we can start there and then move around and make sure we get through everybody's lists to give direction on the things we'd like to see changed. Council member Dickinson.
Thank you, Mayor. So I guess I'd like to start with talking about that, the one point five million in or out of the capital improvement budget for the payment booster program. So I'll just, I'll start with what I saw last week or two weeks ago when we were looking at this was the decreased amount of money made a difference in the street condition by by year over time, but not a not a drastic one and not one that wasn't still increasing. I think where I just see, you know, a decreasing condition of the streets because of that loss of investment, I would be concerned. But having it continue to increase over the next five or six years seemed like it wasn't a terrible thing, and it wasn't obviously increasing at the same rate, but it just didn't, it didn't seem like a like a bad thing for us to use that one point five million dollars differently. And so my understanding is that our goal is that the average PCI is sixty five to seventy five. And with the funding of one point five million dollars less, it increases to seventy three by twenty twenty seven is the chart that we were given, which is at the high end of that range. And so I guess I would just ask why, why that's not workable for us, or if we don't feel like that's something that's an acceptable use of that one point five million dollars if we're still getting the seventy three, a score, an average score of seventy three by twenty twenty seven. So any other thoughts from other council members or clarification from staff if that, if I said anything wrong?
Yeah, thanks, Council member Dickinson. And so I think having different perspectives, just where we came into the project is probably where we are looking at it differently. So when I first got on council, the streets were in very poor condition, and so we had to come up with a way to get caught back up. And we're, when we very first started this, we wanted a five year plan to get our streets to an average condition of seventy five. And I think we're in the seventh year of the plan, and we're still not there. So it's a, it's been a very slow process. So I know coming into it now, you're like, well, the streets aren't that bad. But it's like, well, it's pretty easy for them to slide back to where we were, and they continue to deteriorate. So when we re-measure Kurt will come back in and re-normalize the line. So I know it's the best information we have, and that's great. But when we get the new PCI numbers, it's really useful to look at those and then go look at the streets. And those are the ones with the lower scores and PCI for folks watching how pavement condition index, the ones with the lower scores really are the ones we get complaints on from people. And so the idea was nobody should have to live on a street that's below a forty. And then, and we should strive for for our average condition to be seventy five. And then what that does in the long run is it lowers our overall cost. So there is this period where we're catching up still. And I feel strongly that we should try to keep the money in there to get to that seventy five and then no streets below forty because we're still not there. It definitely wasn't a five year plan. It's taken longer than we thought, and I can understand why you're concerned about the balances. But when we get to a different topic, I have a different solution for that. So I, I think maybe we can address the issue with the fund balances and still getting to our priorities. Because if you look in the packet, the ARPA funding's not allocated. So I think if we have a discussion around that in a bit, maybe that resolves it and makes it so that we can keep that program whole, get our streets up. And and it's funny, you talk about numbers and you just say, well, it's just an arbitrary number. But we really, what happened is the whole council went out and we went out with neighbors and we went on this tour and we looked at roads and we would say, well, that one's, everybody agrees that one's no good. Everybody agrees that one is, you know, not great. That one, that's good enough. That one is what we want. And so that's where these numbers came from. It's like from staring at streets and then talking to people and saying which ones of these are good. So I, I think we should leave the money in and resolve the deficit through another discussion.
Okay, I appreciate your comments.
Mayor Proton Maloney.
Um, it was interesting when I campaigned for council in two thousand fifteen, which is the same year that this this program was initially implemented, which will, which will mean based upon the the current projections, we're looking at a fifteen year fix for a five year plan. So, you know, one of the things I look at with this is, one of the things the mayor mentioned, this investment, the more investment we do earlier on, actually helps us lower the overall cost over time. And that's an analysis that Kurt Carr has showed us numerous times. But one of the things I really like about this approach that we have is, and I actually witnessed them going down my street and asked them what they were doing and I'll come in and look at our machine, and it was all really cool. That's not the story. But the story is that it's data driven. And I like the fact that, and I believe in in the email that we got from Kurt, that it's going to be done again this fall. So based on what we know in the fall, that gives us better data to say, should we alter this program? You know, I think there are cities like Beverly Hills and their number is ninety, you know, we never want to do that. We're not that kind of city, but you know, having a question about, once we find out what the number is, where we're at, is that good enough? Should it be less? Should it be more? How does that change our investment? I like the data driven approach. So I would like to keep this in play for at least next year. And once we have that data, that's I believe we'll get in probably beginning of twenty twenty two, we should reopen that discussion about how we really handle this program. So that's my sense. And I would say for twenty twenty two, we should leave it as is. Thank you.
Council member Lipton.
Thank you. I generally agree with what has already been said, and particularly the mayor's comments. We, we have worked very long and hard trying to work on the streets, which, you know, our view was basic infrastructure and when we had kind of dug ourselves a hole, no pun intended, over the previous years. And now we've got a plan and we've got the funding to get the streets to a condition that where we want them to be and that are maintainable. And I would hate to go back and lose ground because it was, we had to make sacrifices to get to where we are. And where we are now is good, but it's not perfect, and we still got work to do. But I do have a question of Kurt, if I may. Kurt, I can't remember the last time you did the analysis on the PCIs. But I was wondering whether the current inflationary conditions as related to streets, you know, maintenance and construction have been accounted for in the projections in the future.
Director Carr. That's a great, yep, Kurt Carr, Public Works Director. That's a great question. So we have four percent inflation in the model. So when the forecast you review, there's a four percent inflation. For a lot of the, for, you know, we do a lot of different techniques. So you kind of blend it overall. We were trending around three percent a year. Certain minor portions of the work might have trended higher. And so I think the model at this point is I'm not going to call it conservative, but it's, it's close to where reality is.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. And so before we, I'm not seeing any other hands, and everybody doesn't have to talk about everyone, and that'll get Caleb back to his family reunion faster. So just with the general vibe of the discussion, are people comfortable leaving the paving booster program where it is to leave the program on track? Okay, and so I think the next natural conversation is to talk about that ARPA funding that I sort of alluded to in the previous conversation. And so if you look in the packet, there's, there's a fund that's been created to put the American Rescue Act money into, and you can see that it's largely unallocated out. And so what I would recommend we do tonight as council is give direction to staff that we should maximize the amount of ARPA funding that we can use toward lost revenue. And that's a category that the federal government has come up with that's an appropriate use. And the reason I propose that we use it is maximize it as lost revenue is then we can look for the types of categories of funding under lost revenue that are eligible for ARPA funding. And one of those, I believe, is public safety. There's several categories. But the reason I would pick public safety is our public safety budget is a large budget. So if we allocate the ARPA funding to public safety and it's headcounted FTE, we could cover those costs out of the general fund for the period like twenty twenty two and twenty twenty three, which would then, the money that we traditionally would spend on public safety would be then eligible to be spent on other things. And so it would reduce the amount of paperwork and burden and overhead and keep us from federalizing hundreds and hundreds of little small projects. So by doing that, we would then have this fund, the money would no longer be in that fund that's been created for our, but it would get transferred to the general fund to cover public safety. And we would then have public safety funds, what would have been public safety funds available to allocate. So it's not like it would cover ongoing expenditures. We couldn't have headcount or anything like that. But then we could fund our highest priority programs with it without having to federalize those programs. So that's my proposal. And if we were to do that, it would give us enough money in the general fund to be able to transfer to the Capital Projects Fund to cover the deficits. And so if that was too confusing, I'd happy to go through it in a different order or ask questions to propose it. We can ask questions of staff too, if that helps people, but that's, I think that's a good path forward. And if we could agree on that, I think it would streamline things quite a lot going forward. Mayor Proton Maloney.
I thought that Counselor Brown had his hand up. Did you put your hand back down?
Okay. Thank you. Yes, thank you, Mayor Proton. I'll defer at this point. Thank you.
Okay, well, I think there's two pieces to this, and and one is, how do we justify the the money? And certainly what you talked about, you know, taking a look at the budget book, as everybody knows, I look at the budget book a lot. It's more than the ARPA funding for public safety. So I think that's, that fits very easily in being able to justify that lost revenue. And I think we need to initiate a process where we look at how we invest this money. I like the way Counselor Dickinson says that it, how do we invest to reduce cost over time? So I, I think that that's what we need to do is set a time, future date, though we have that discussion and figure out how we do the best investment in that. So I agree with the way you've laid it out, Mayor. Thank you.
So just since I don't see a lot of other hands up, I'll just ask the finance director to sort of, you know, walk us through. So if if we were to use it for lost revenue, then would that basically be booked in the budget as an expenditure from that fund to the general fund?
Oh, Mayor, can I, this is, this is interim city manager Megan Davis, and I would, I can't raise my hand.
Oh, sorry, you're a co-host. Megan, please.
I was trying to raise my hand. But, um, you know, I would just like to, you know, mention that we, we still haven't gotten final treasury guidance around this, and we're still getting information about what the procurement requirements will be, even if we do, you know, basically allocate this all towards lost revenue. We also have a new, our new recovery grants manager has just started this week and is already doing some analysis and research around these types of questions with the information that's currently available. So I want to make sure that you all are aware of that, and that it could be that there still will be additional procurement requirements and costs that even if you do the lost revenue piece. And so we're, you know, I think we need to be cognizant that we don't have all that information. So I just want council to be aware of that. And Director Watson, please feel free to chime in as well.
I, I agree a hundred percent with what the mayor and Megan have said. I mean, all this hinges upon the definition of lost revenue. If we meet those criteria that free, that gives you a lot more flexibility on what to use the ARPA funding for. And yes, you can use it for public safety. So I think on page, if you look on page twenty of your packet, that's the American Rescue Plan Act Fund. And right now you can see at the end of twenty twenty one, we expect a two point six million dollar amount. And in twenty twenty two, the only amount that we have in there is a transfer to the general fund to fund the the new position, the grants manager position. So we end up with five point one million. So that's the amount of revenue, or that's the amount of funds that you can apply to public safety. Once you do that, and it goes into public safety, it's going to greatly increase the general fund reserves. But the general fund reserves that have been increased, though, will now be unrestricted. So then you can use those funds on almost anything you want without federalizing whatever you, whatever you use those on. So we've, we've looked at a, even just a two million dollar transfer from the general fund, a one time transfer from the general fund to the Capital Projects Fund, pretty much takes care of that negative equity chart that we're showing on on page three of your packet. So.
Sorry to interrupt Director Watson. So just kind of back to the question I was asking and to respect city manager Davis's points, too. I mean, we have a lot of questions still around this American Rescue money. And so, but nonetheless, we have to adopt a budget. And so what that means is we're likely going to do a budget amendment after we adopt it to to rectify any issues. So would it be appropriate for council to give direction at this time to say, you know, our intention is to try to streamline this because we have a small staff and federal money can be very expensive. And so we don't want to add forty percent cost to our capital projects. We don't want to have all of these additional costs for a little teeny city of our size. And so if we can streamline the process to apply the funds to an eligible program that meets the criteria in a way that doesn't federalize everything, then we would be able to increase the general fund by supplanting that funding essentially. And then we can talk about priorities from there. And the reason I think we would need to do it now and then amend it later is so we don't show a negative budget in the capital side. Because we have more than enough money to cover it if this works. So could we take that approach and then plan to amend the budget if need be, if we get information back that says, you know, oh, lost revenue really works a totally different way than we thought, and the treasury's changed the rules?
That's a question to me. Yeah, absolutely. I would recommend, as you said, go ahead and appropriate or budget for that transfer one time transfer from the general fund to the Capital Projects Fund. So you at least aren't showing a deficit within the Capital Projects Fund. General Fund can absolutely easily make that transfer. And now with the latest assumptions we're using on turnback would stay way above the target. So we could go ahead and set that transfer up for twenty twenty two, include it in the budget, and then next year do the budget amendment, depending on what the final treasury rules are. And assuming that we do hit that revenue loss category for the city. Is that, is that what you were saying?
That's what I was asking. Thanks, Director Watson. Mayor Proton Maloney. You muted yourself. Sorry.
I got ahead of Counselor Brown again somehow. I'm not sure how I did that. So I want to be clear what I'm, what I'm saying. I agree with the using the methodology on the lost revenue with the idea that we're creating more flexibility of how we can invest this money. And when I say invest, I'm talking about investing in projects and capital expenses. I'm not talking about balancing the operating side of the general fund budget. I would like to comment on on page forty five of the report, which is page fourteen of twenty nine of the recommended budget. There is a listing of things staff has in there. I agree with funding the hundred thousand for the recovery grants manager. I agree with the employee vaccine incentive program. The next one on the regional development and so forth, that's something I'd like to, you know, discuss. I know it's eligible. I think we need to figure out how it fits. But I, I don't want to be coming up with a long list of things until we know how we want to invest this. But I want to put us at odds with things that are already being, you know, encumbered. So we're probably, once we understand the rules, I think we need to have this, this discussion sooner or later and decide how it gets invested for transportation projects or whatever we deem as the biggest priority. Thank you.
Thanks, Council member Brown.
Thanks, Mayor. I just want to add my support for the increased flexibility that I think the plan that you laid out provides. I think it's, I think I'm, I'm really recognizing what the interim city manager said about sort of a lack of clarity from the federal government. I think it's important for us to sort of give direction at this point and say that this is our intent. And and to reduce the kind of overhead and the paperwork that would, that would be required. And then, you know, I don't disagree with what the mayor pretend was saying as well as like, you know, once we free up a good portion of money, then we, then I would be very much in support of trying to find priority projects to invest that in. So.
Thanks, Council member Brown. Council member Fahey.
Thank you. Yes, I also agree with what's been said. I think it's a good idea to designate this fund money, but with the thought in the back of your mind that it may not be allowed at some point. And so we do have to have alternative options for for funding these things. But one other just quick point of order is, when are we doing public comments?
Yep. Thanks, Council member Fahey. So we'll take public comments all at once. And so if I take it now, then people won't have the benefit of listening to the whole council discussion, and then we might say something people find crazy, and they might want to comment on that. So I'm happy to take it now, if that's what you'd like, Council member Fahey. But then the disadvantage to that is that people don't get the benefit of some of the council discussion. And we do have several more public hearings on this. So if if they do hear something later and then want to comment on that, they could either email to and call us. So if you'd like to take them now, we can do that.
I was just curious because it is supposed to, in on the agenda, it said that it was going to happen before. I just wanted to know if it hadn't been forgotten.
I don't think I've ever forgotten public. No difference. So don't you worry. We're definitely getting, but if you, if anyone would like to propose it coming earlier, that's absolutely fine, and we can do that, too. Council member Lay.
Yeah, I just want to understand. You ran through that pretty quickly at the beginning, Mayor. I just wanted to confirm the idea of not federalizing the programs just means that we don't have to interact directly with the federal government on each of these projects if.
I think it's more, my understanding is it's more than that. So like at Dr. Cog and at the State Transportation Advisory Committee, what they've been telling us is that if you use these American Rescue Plan money on a transportation project, for example, that it then triggers a bunch of additional requirements on how you bid the project and some of the rules that you have to follow about procurement. So you have to get American like steel, and you have to use certain wage reporting. There's just requirements that come with a federal project that don't come with some of the state and local projects where we have more flexibility. And at the State Transportation Advisory Committee, they said that it adds between thirty and fifty percent of a cost to a transportation project to do that. So if we use it on things like personnel, then it doesn't trigger all of, it's just a different set of requirements. And so I'm not, I mean, I, I appreciate the deliberate nature of the federal government and why they've put all those layers on. I'm not trying to say anything disparaging about that. It's just that we're a small community. And so if we can, if we can choose to use this on something that makes our lives a little bit easier and makes the reporting a little bit easier, it seems like we ought to try to do that. And then it allows us to do what Mayor Proton Maloney was saying, and that is then we can say, what's our highest priority investment? And we can take the money from the general fund then that will have some excess freedom in the general fund that that gets grown out of this. So then we could say, okay, what's that investment, that one time capital investment there and put that money toward it. And that money wouldn't have those strings attached to it.
And we're pretty confident, at least based on the information we have. Now, I mean, I guess this is a question for Megan. Are we pretty comfortable right now that uh, with the information we have, that we're more likely to be able to avoid the extra strings and administrative expense and all the kinds of things that the mayor just mentioned by proceeding this way than in, in the alternative way?
Yeah. And I think the answer is that we don't know.
Yeah, I was just asking for the interim city, city manager's thought on that.
Yeah, I think the, um, the, the proposal that the mayor has laid out with the flexibility, sort of the caveat flexibility that, you know, we, we, we could, um, if, even if we transferred these funds, um, we could use any range of approaches to account for the dollars. And so I think this, you know, we just want the flexibility to look at all of the options that we would have. You know, different types of direct expenditures, um, project expenditures that might be, um, that wouldn't come with all of those strings of the federal procurement requirements that the mayor is describing.
Yeah. Um, and then, so what we'd end up with is we would, we would do this, we would hope that this sort of works well. And that if for some reason we got guidance from treasury, you would come back to us with an amendment that would fix or attempt to fix whatever needed to be fixed at that point.
Yeah, I think we, you know, we still would have to determine how we directly accounted for these dollars. And so I think we, um, you know, can come back and let you know exactly whether that is staffing, for example. Um, you know, police officer staffing is something that we did for the coronavirus relief fund. For our coronavirus relief fund that, that we received. So, or if it were, you know, some other expense or project or if it were, um, the direct revenue loss, revenue replacement piece, so.
Okay. I, I'm, I'm supportive of that. I mean, that makes sense.
So, so Councilmember Lay, part of what I was, the reason I brought that up is because if you look at the way it is now, the money just stays in that fund. And so what I'm proposing in our budget is that we show the transfer to the general fund to cover that, what we think is going to be an eligible expense. And then we can show a transfer from the general fund to the capital projects fund for the deficit that's created there. And then it still leaves a pool in the general fund of, um, reserve money that we can do what Mayor Proton Maloney laid out as identifying what the highest priority investments are. Maybe it's, I'm sure someone's going to bring up landscaping in a minute. Maybe it's these other things. So then we can have that conversation and figure out what those other investments are.
Good, good. Thanks.
Mayor Proton Maloney.
Mayor, you took some of the words out of my mouth. Um, you know, jumping ahead, I think our, our budget that's being presented does have some gaps. Um, I believe that, uh, the streetscapes and parks are a good example of that. We're seeing, um, you know, in many parts of the city. And I know there's been, um, a lot of citizen concern in Ward Two. But I think if you look in other words, um, you know, the streetscapes and parks and the trails are, are really good examples of, of where we could invest money. And one of the things that I brought up in several budget meetings is really doing a better job of keeping up with the ten-thousand trees we have in the city uh, with healthy pruning and, and things like that. And I, with the current resources we have for open strays, space trail maintenance, for, uh, tree maintenance programs, streetscapes park, I don't believe we have enough capital money to meet the, what I believe is the expectation of the community. And that's, I'm just giving an example of how we could invest this money. We also have a potential, uh, significant underpass project. Some of it could be invested there as well. So I think there's plenty of opportunities to do this in a very thoughtful way and do it in a way that is considered to be an investment and is certainly in line with the intent of this program. So just some ideas I'd throw out there for further thought in the future. Thank you.
Thanks, Mayor Proton Maloney. So to wrap this one up, uh, the consensus is to give direction to try to use the money for lost revenue to be able to move it to the general fund. And then, um, to use general fund money that's freed up to do a transfer to the capital projects fund to cover the deficit and then continue these other discussions into the future, um, as we understand how we're going to change our programs to address the needs of the community. And so Mayor Proton Maloney, did you want to talk more about any other budgetary changes this year? Um, were you changing the topic to maintenance? Or was that just an example within that context?
I'm happy to change the topic to maintenance. So, um, in almost every one of these, well, every one of these budget discussions, I, I've talked about maintenance in, in various forms. So let me just pick an example. So our open space trail maintenance, currently we're allocating a hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars a year for operations and a hundred and eighty thousand dollars in capital to maintain the, and, and I'm sure Nathan can tell me the exact number of miles of trails. But I would say that that's lowly inadequate, uh, as an example. And when I'm out on the trails, I, I know that we need to be doing more maintenance. And so that's one area that I've been pointing out. We need to have a routine maintenance program where we really do maintain those with a preventative maintenance approach and do it routinely. Another would be, I, I mentioned the taking care of the trees and, you know, we don't really have a, an inventory or maintenance program there. Um, I don't believe we have enough staff to be able to keep up with the needs there. And, and then the last one that I would point out, which I just mentioned a few minutes ago, is the streetscapes and parks. Um, you know, if you go to, to Cherry and McCaslin, um, the streetscapes there, um, are basically dead. Um, and, you know, our community has a higher expectation and that. And those are the kind of things where I'd like to see a program where we're actually trying to maintain those and do it in a routine way. And that we, if it is a priority, we find a way to fund it. Either by reallocating funding or adding, asking the citizens in the, in the case of open spaces and parks to provide additional funding for those kind of programs. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Lipton.
Yes, thanks. So I, I guess I'll, you know, kind of jump in the fray on, on this issue. It seems to me that we have gotten so far behind for a variety of reasons. And I'd be curious to see what staff thinks the reasons are. And whether there's a funding gap or other reasons that would explain why our landscaping has suffered the way it has. But I also think that perhaps we need to do a surge in order to, um, get the landscaping to the point where it can be main, maintained well. So I think, you know, like, I, I think we've gotten so far behind in some respects that we really need to look at allocating some additional funding if that's what we need, you know, to catch up. So that the, uh, the staff has a, at least a chance of keeping up. Because right now I, I don't think they can keep up because it's, it's, they've gotten so far behind. But I think we need to hear from staff what, what they think the need is. If it's, uh, some one-time money to, you know, to make investments, then we should consider that as part of the discussion tonight. If there are other reasons, we need to know about those. But it should be part of the budget conversations for, uh, next fiscal year.
Director Mosley, you want to tell us a little bit about what you already have planned in this budget and then what additional resources you think you need?
Yes, thank you, uh, Mayor Stolzman. Nathan Mosley, Director of Parks Recreation and Open Space. Yeah, I, I think there's definitely a combination of things that have led to kind of where we're at right now. Uh, but certainly I know that we're not meeting expectations in many areas. And so we need to work on creating a plan um, to present to all of you. And so I am working with Megan on, on that. Um, I would say last year we didn't hire any seasonals at all due to COVID. We weren't sure what the impacts would be. Prior to that, we had, had difficulty in hiring seasonals, um, over the years. And then this year we were only able to hire about thirty-five percent of our seasonal staff. You know, and, and so there's a number of reasons why I think this year it was exceptionally bad. But one of the things that we do have included in the budget is five-hundred-thousand dollars for replacement of the irrigation at Community Park. And I think this is a good example of an investment in infrastructure that is going to allow staff then to focus on other issues because we've spent so much time focused on trying to repair breaks of the main line at Community Park that it's pulled staff resources away from many other areas in the city. We're also asking to reallocate some of our seasonal dollars to hire two additional full-time park maintenance workers. Uh, so we have some more stability on our staff rather than, uh, kind of relying so much on our seasonal help and then also have asked for additional funds to contract out an additional day of mowing so that we have more flexibility with our current full-time staff.
Thanks, Director Mosley. Back to Councilmember Lipton. You're muted.
Of course I am. Um, yeah, I, I appreciate what you, what you said. And, you know, it strikes me that we probably have a number of parks that have irrigation line issues and need reinvestment. The, the part of the challenge we have is so much of this infrastructure was put in during the nineties and two thousands. Much of it is kind of getting towards the end of its useful lives. And we have to make, I think, some significant investments, not just, okay, we're going to hire a couple more people to mow lawns or we're going to have another, you know, irrigation technician. I mean, I think, I think we have to look at perhaps the contractor community and, and flush out projects and allocate funding for projects. It strikes me, we're sitting on quite a bit of funding. You know, both in the general fund, open space, you know, and other, other funds that could be used towards what I call doing a search and trying to get things, you know, scoped and, and perhaps under construction by next spring and actually making a difference so that the staff, even if you enhance the staff, has a fighting chance.
All right, I appreciate that. I mean, we've, I'm sorry.
Yeah, no, go ahead, Nathan.
Go ahead, Nathan.
No, I was just going to say, I mean, because we've kind of taken that same approach with playground replacement. Most of the playgrounds were all kind of put in at the same time and we've slowly started replacing those. And we're going to need to do the same thing with irrigation, uh, infrastructure. And, you know, to Dennis's point, we have started putting money in out years and designating certain amounts of money. This year we're going to be resurfacing Davidson Mesa. And in the out years, we're identifying different locations, whether it's Heckla or portions of the Coal Creek Trail. So that way we do start replacing and enhancing our infrastructure on a recurring basis. So we don't get into this hole again in the future.
And just so, so far what I'm hearing from folks, and we'll see if the, if the rest of the voices, um, come in the same direction. But it sounds like people are asking for a plan to, uh, come forward and it doesn't have to wait for the next budget cycle. That's what I've been hearing from people that were thankful for the improvements that you've put in here, like the, the line and the changes to staffing. But that may not be enough. And that doesn't mean you should wait until the fall of twenty twenty-two to come forward with your proposal if you're ready with it sooner. Councilman, that's what I have heard so far. I'll summarize the whole thing at the end, but I just want to keep everybody on track. Councilmember Fahy.
Thank you. Yes, I agree with what's been said so far about, uh, coming up with a plan. I think it would be really helpful to come up with a five-year plan or a ten-year plan like we did for transportation to how we're going to maintain what we have in, in a reasonable, rational way. And, you know, allocating the funds, hiring staff, whatever it is that's necessary. But have a plan for, we need to replace this irrigation system this, every so many years or resurface the grass every so many years. And, and we do need to come up with a new way of maintaining the grass, um, especially in the parks. Uh, because we're now doing it with light, without glyphosate or two-four D. So the whole process for maintaining it and irrigating it is going to be different. And it will probably take some additional funds, at least in the initial years, to get it established as a, a greener, more healthy lawn in the parks. So I would, I would really emphasize that we need to come up with some kind of plan and fund it to accomplish this.
Thanks, Councilmember Fahy. Councilmember Brown.
Yeah, I'm, I'm very supportive of the, um, the efforts to try to make sure that, um, our maintenance of our, of our parks and, and particularly of our trees. Um, you know, one of the things that I was pleased to see is that we've been able to, uh, expand the number of days for the branch drop-off because it's not only about, um, maintaining our, um, trees, um, from a city perspective. But it's also about, you know, citizens being able to, to have the opportunity to maintain their trees. So, um, I, I would encourage staff to. Uh, the staff are going to come back, um, with options for expanded days in the spring again. I'm going to encourage them to continue to do that. But, um, that's just, that's, that's somewhat of an aside, just to say that I support, um, this conversation. Support the efforts to increase maintenance, um, and to come up with a real plan like tomorrow. Because, you know, we all know that it sounds like the citizens are really interested in this and we, we really need to, you know, quite frankly, stop making excuses about labor shortages and just try to, try to get the, uh, get, try to get the work done as quickly as we can.
Thanks, Councilmember Brown. Councilmember Lay.
Yeah, thanks. Maybe it's unanimous. I mean, we're all getting, uh, a lot of feedback in the community about maintenance of what we have and trails and parks. Uh, and I add my voice to that. I think the streetscape piece that we've talked about is similarly important. And I don't want to, uh, you know, I want to put a little bit of emphasis on that because we've got, you know, on South Boulder Road, it's, we just got some places that really don't, don't say very much about, um, welcoming people to Louisville in, in a, in the way that we should. So, um, and uh, if, if it, if staff thinks that the best way to get to that point is to, to add a, a plug of extra money upfront, then I would look forward to hearing, hearing that. And, but we do want to get to a place where we can, where it's, you know, we're not trying to, uh, constantly keep barely living things barely alive. Um, I think that's, that's, uh, been a problem before. So anyway, I think that's, uh, all, all good. And, uh, and I also, I mean, I support the idea of coming up with a little more, you know, of a plan that's a little bit longer term. So we can, you know, we have some assurance and that we can make sure that the public can be confident that we have, uh, a plan for how we're doing maintenance, uh, in light of a lot of these changes that are going on. So, thanks.
Thanks, Councilmember Lay. Um, so I think there's consensus on that topic that we, uh, are appreciative of what we've seen, but we would like staff to bring forward. And, and so since it sounds like staff is working to develop a plan that might not be ready for time of budget adoption, but we want the, um, Parks and Rec Director to bring us whatever the proposal is as a budget amendment as soon as he feels ready to bring something in front of council. And so, uh, and if it does align with the budget adoption, that's absolutely fine too. Councilmember Lipton? You're muted.
Okay, three times already. I, I, I would like to go perhaps a little bit, uh, further and maybe create a placeholder in the budget for this next, you know, period of twelve months. Um, so they can actually get going with some projects and, and perhaps gear up for the winter, which is when a lot of the pre, the tree pruning and maintenance, you know, should be done. Um, you know, they, they can certainly bring you back a plan, but I think, I think having some money in the budget for this next fiscal year, I think would be prudent, uh, instead of just having to do a, you know, a budget amendment later. I guess my preference would be to do something upfront than the budget adjustment.
Um, so if the group agrees on that, that's perfectly fine. I guess I would advise that, you know, we will have extra money beyond our reserve limit in the general fund, given what we agreed on, on the ARPA thing. And so I would ask council members to look at that as the placeholder. If we allocate it to a line item, then the money's appropriated and can be spent. And so I think it's our expectation that this plan comes back to city council for review. And when we review it, we can approve the amendment. So I just am hesitant to, um, appropriate the funds without the review. So I would rather leave the money in the general fund unappropriated. Councilmember Lipton, how do you feel about that?
I, I could, you know, I, I understand your arguments. I would just like to see the, the commitment in very strong terms that we're going to come back to this and, um, and that, you know, it's, it's going to come back and. likely be funded as a budget amendment, I guess.
Yeah. So I think if, I would be really comfortable with everyone on council saying we're committed to this. And it's our expectation that there will be a budget amendment that comes back to us before November of 2022, that we're, our expectation is work is done on this in, in 2022. And so we want to see those projects coming forward. I just, there have been problems with expending funds in parks in the past. So like we've appropriated money for tree trimming, for example, in the past and it's not been expended. And so if we just appropriate it, I think it takes us out of an oversight role that I think is pretty important in this particular case. Mayor Pretton Maloney?
You know, I, I, I have mixed thoughts on this. Um, I do appreciate the sense of urgency that Counselor Lipton was pointing out that, you know, that, and, and I feel the same way. And you, you've heard me talk about this since June, but in the budget meetings on various things. And so I, I, I would like to see a plan. I do believe we need to make a commitment. And if that means we need to have a special meeting to do a budget appropriation based upon a plan, then I'm okay doing that. Um, but I would like to see a commitment of what we're going to do and what timeframe, which maybe is disagreeing with, uh, what Counselor Lipton said, but I appreciate his sense of urgency and commitment. And that's something I think we all need to agree to.
That's fine. I'm fine with that.
All right. And I'll just ask City Manager Davis if that's clear enough on that topic?
Yes, thank you. Um, that's clear. And, you know, in, in, um, and, and Director Mosley can chime in too. But in our, our discussions, I mean, we would hope that we'll be able to have something before November 2022. I mean, I think we're hoping that we could at least come up with some, you know, initial investments that we would need to make. Um, and then, you know, it may take a little longer to get a more robust, longer-term plan in place. But, um, we would, um, be happy to bring back a, a plan for discussion and for a budget amendment sometime next year. And we can talk about it during work planning too, um, what the timing, appropriate timing would be.
Thank you, City Manager Davis. And so I think we have covered that topic. And there's consensus from council on it. So we can move to a new topic if someone would like to bring one forward. Mayor Pretton Maloney?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I, I would like to ask a question of Director Watson. On page 23 of our packet is the Recreation Center Construction Fund. And currently there's approximately $214,000 in there. So the question is, can that be used to pay back the bond or does it have to be expended as construction?
Actually, either one. Uh, what we're proposing here is, um, Director Mosley has identified $125,000 for next year that that includes upgrades to the recreation center. It has to be for what the bond purposes, you know, were originally for. But the remainder that then we're, we're saying that we're going to take the remainder, the 90,000, and we're going to send that to the debt service fund because there's no more need for those bond proceeds. So it's got to be either one or the other.
Okay. So we're doing both, just to cover all bases. So I, I guess the, the second question then is for Director Mosley on the 125,000. Can you give us a sense for what that, those expenses would be?
I think they're listed. Give me a second. I can find them. I mean, there was a list that we provided. I'm not sure exactly what page they're listed on. Um, Kevin, do you know?
I, I'm sorry. I must have missed that.
Yeah, I don't think there's anything in the packet. I, uh, Nathan has, Director Mosley has provided information on this and we can get that to you.
Yeah.
Tomorrow.
I can send it out via email with a list of the identified projects. We took those to the rec advisory board as well. For their input on those.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Great. Now, so the consensus there will be to, um, see, you'll send us those capital projects tomorrow. And then people will have a chance to comment on it before we finally approve the budget. So does that satisfy that topic? Council, Councilmember Lipton?
Not, not totally yet. Um, and I do recall the list of projects, the, it would, I'm just thinking out loud. I mean, I, I know there's some interest in making further investments to help greening up the rec center and maybe invest in some of the mechanical equipment that got value engineered out. I mean, there were some things that we just didn't do that would have probably made it more energy efficient, whether the 90,000 should be considered for those kind of investments. And so putting into a reserve fund and have it sit there for 19 years or 20 years. So I, I was wondering, maybe we could think a little bit more strategically in terms of that 90,000.
Thanks, Councilmember Lipton. I think once we see the entire list of projects, I don't, I mean, maybe those projects are on the list. I don't think we have enough information to have the discussion tonight. So maybe we could put a pin in this one for the next budget discussion.
Yeah, and part of the pin might be that, I, I mean, I think the, uh, there was a five or six-year plan for the rec center for doing some of this infrastructure. And maybe we could front-load some of it with the 90,000, um, instead of having it work in later years because of cash flow issues.
Thanks, Councilmember Lipton. Any other discussion on this one? From my perspective, if there are things that were undone in the construction project or, um, have failed since it was put in, like, you know, for example, the landscaping on the northeast side, um, the trees in that retaining wall area, a, a lot of it's dead and dying already. So if, you know, that, that was part of the construction project. So if we need to use the funds to complete the construction project, that seems completely appropriate. But if we're now doing things beyond the scope of the construction project and just coming up with new capital projects, that's more what the rec fund than the capital projects fund are for. And so I'm not in favor of scope creep. There, there are plenty of things like Councilmember Lipton said that got value engineered out where that haven't been completed. So I would like to see the list and then discuss it the next time we talk budget. Anybody else on this topic? All right. Any new topics from folks? One topic that was already brought up sort of briefly and in the context of another one was this regional workforce development program. Um, and so I don't know if, um, Megan Pierce is on, and if you could tell us a little bit about the program and then how it relates to the economic vitality strategic plan.
Hi, good evening. Could you just repeat the question? I wasn't sure which program you were asking about.
Uh, there was listed in the packet a, a regional workforce development, um, program.
That I think is the ARPA's funding section, Megan.
Yeah. So I, I think the, the workforce is, is maybe a, a bit of a misnomer. So one program we've been working on as a potential ARPA funding is in agreement for services with the Boulder Small Business Development Center. And that would be to provide, um, special and technical services to Louisville businesses as part of our pandemic recovery plan. So it would have some workforce elements, but it would be, uh, more of a project providing, um, consulting services, workshops and specialized training to our businesses.
Thanks. And just my question was just sort of, if you could kind of tell us a little bit about how that fits into the economic vitality strategic plan?
Yeah, I, I think it's an outgrowth of the strategic plan because it's, it's more related to the pandemic recovery. And, and these are technical services that we don't have the capacity to provide as staff in-house to our business community. And so we've looked outside at organizations that may be able to provide those services on our behalf.
Any other discussion on this topic from folks? All right. I think, I mean, it sounds like a great project. This is one of those where it sounds like we're coming up with a new program. And a lot of times as council members, we hear about staff capacity and that we're putting too many things on. And, um, I recognize this as a payment to someone else. So maybe it has very little administrative burden on our side. But these are the types of things that I think grow, grow and they're really great. But, um, like, we have an economic vitality strategic plan that I think should guide our investments in that area. And I know, you know, there's a lot of work to be done for filling retail vacancy, um, that people are eager to see done. And I know there's a global pandemic and there's all these things that create problems, but it's just, it, I find it challenging when we're funding a program that's outside the strategic plan and we're not accomplishing the things in the strategic plan. So that it's a, this one is a challenge for me to see. But seeing no other hands up, it sounds like we'll leave it in. And so I need to talk, Councilmember Lipton?
Can I ask about, can we get more information on this? And, and where did it come from?
So, um, this is Interim City Manager Megan Davis. So you notice this is under ARPA. So you can see there were some example programs that are directly eligible programs for the recovery funding. And this is a program that, I mean, I don't see this as actually an expansion of our services because the whole purpose is that we would be, um, collaborating and contracting with the Small Business Development Center who has already stood up these programs and developed these programs. And so, you know, this, we put in some placeholders for, for, um, investments and programs like the vaccination wellness bonus program that we had taught, that I sent you information on, that, you know, and the, um, grants manager that are directly, um, you know, to kind of fund COVID recovery and response. So this is one of the programs that we've been looking at in there. So our plan is when we come back to you with some of these projects, um, and with a plan for the recovery funding that will bring some of these, you know, forward to you.
Councilmember Lipton?
Well, I look forward to getting more information on this one, um, before the next budget meeting.
Councilmember Lay?
I wonder interim, uh, city manager, Davis, is it, is it possible to get a, a little bit more information from you around the eligible projects? Is there a, you know, but I guess I presume there's probably some sort of, resource online or whatnot that I'd, it would be, I'd, I'd love to have that just to take a look at.
Yeah, sure. We can, um, you know, we provided the initial guidance when we had a discussion, I think, back in maybe July it was, a couple, you know, a couple of months ago, maybe June. Provided kind of the, the treasury guidance that we have so far. And then we also provided at that time, kind of a list of projects that we had identified, things that, that we could, you know, direct this funding for. And, you know, we haven't had a follow-up discussion around, you know, how, what those projects are and how they can be, how they can be spent or how that funding can be spent.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think it would be nice to know what the universe is.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thanks, Councilmember Lay. Any other discussion on this one? Any new topics from folks? Councilmember Lipton?
Yeah, I, I would like to have a, um, a good conversation and review of the the proposal to expand the museum and kind of looking at the history of that and where this is, um, taking us. I was, I was surprised to see this back on the list again. After my rec election and correct me if I'm wrong, you know, I, I, this was on the list, uh, three years ago as a possibility that we were thinking about, but we also said that we would like the benefit of the citizen survey that we did in 2000. Gosh, I believe we got the results in 2020. And, you know, it, it, the, the feedback from our citizens, you know, showed that it was relatively little interest in a tax increase for that purpose, for an expansion of the museum. I mean, compared to the other, uh, potential tax increases that we put into the citizen survey to get feedback. And actually the, the prioritization of the museum itself. Not to say if, you know, it didn't have support, but in the list of priorities for the city, I think it came in really last. So I am, I'm questioning whether, you know, it's prudent to invest $200,000 to continue this, uh, this venture, adventure with the, with the museum expansion. And, you know, where that's going to lead us, because, you know, to do an expansion, you're looking at, uh, program, continuing program costs. You, you're looking at a new facility. You're looking at, you know, quite a bit of, uh, new project, new program funding. And, you, you know, in the description that was provided, it, it did not really discuss, uh, the commitment that we had received before about the need for this, um, conceptual design or, you know, schematic design so that the foundation can actually go out and raise money. And that seems to be missing in the conversation, although that was an integral part of the conversation five, six and seven years ago. So I don't know, I'm, you know, I, I've been reluctant to go down this path. I know there are some very passionate people in the community with the museum. I think the museum is important. I'm not sure I'd want to go down road to spend $200,000 to, you know, design something that our citizens really indicated they weren't that interested in. And I think that's why we did the citizen survey and asked the questions related to, to the museum expansion.
Mayor Pretton Maloney?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, just to not repeat, but to add on to what Counselor Lipton said, I, I, I believe his rec election was fairly clear. Um, and of course this, this cut sheet really, you know, it is the one that was done a few years ago. Um, and we did decide we would wait to see the citizen survey. You know, if this had been number one on the survey, we might have, might have considered doing it. And that's why, you know, we never went forward with it. You know, and what this is going to come back with is some idea of the cost. And, you know, based upon the, the numbers that we had several years ago, when, you know, some of the work was done in 2017, we're probably looking at a project nearing $10 million. That's significant. And if this is something that the citizens want, survey indicates differently. Then we have to find a funding mechanism for doing that. And, you know, that's either, uh, raising some tax, creating a tax, um, to fund us. And as Counselor Lipton says, and then it also drives increased operating costs. So, you know, to me, this is something that, um, just doesn't have the wheels to keep going. So this is one that I would suggest we take out of the budget. Thank you.
Thanks, Mayor Pretton Maloney. Councilmember Fahey?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, I, uh, disagree with my two previous council members. I think that the construction of the museum addition building is incredibly important to the history of the town, but also ongoing maintenance and, and community feel. And the only way that it's going to be done is if we do this initial design cost and see exactly how much it will cost. And at that point, we can decide, there's already been a lot of, um, efforts made by the museum and the history foundation, um, even the preservation commission in how we could go forward and raise funds to build this building. If any of you were at the, uh, miners' field this past Saturday, there are only over 250 people showed up to root on the Louisville miners. That's pretty good community interest for, to show up at an event like that. And they're in the process of doing the pop-up park in the space where this new building would go. It would provide a lot of, uh, other benefits. For example, the basement would be storage for our artifacts, which is something we have to do. And we're currently paying to have them stored off-site, which adds to the cost for staff to go and get that and then put it together for a display, whatever. There's also going to be a community space on the first floor that was proposed. That would be a gathering spot for the public, also for the school kids to come and learn about the history of the town that they're living in. And then office space, which would free up rooms in the existing buildings that are historic for displaying exactly how those buildings were used historically. And so it would And so it would it would just improve the city's history. And I'm, I'm a big fan of preserving everything and, and then explaining. And as I said, when I read the proclamation two weeks ago, it's important to remember the good, the bad and the ugly and let everybody know where we came from, where we are and where we'd like to go. And this new building would provide us with the space and resources to do that.
Thanks, Councilmember Fahey. Councilmember Lay.
Thank you. All the comments have been really good on this. I think from a historical perspective, one of the things that we were thinking about when we have allocated money in the past is to, to take a bearing of or measure of what the historical foundation is doing in the way of raising money. I know that a number of people on council previously, and I think I've been one of them, have been concerned that there has been not just lukewarm reception for putting money into the, a new museum building, but that the foundation that's sort of supposed to be the vanguard here is not necessarily getting a lot of traction either. I do know that that building isn't going to get built probably with just a historical foundation behind it. But I'm not sure it would get built with council funds only behind it because I'm not sure we're going to put the amount of money, even if we chose to put the full amount together. It may be something at some point needs a, you know, some kind of public. I don't know, I don't know whether there's a bond issue that out there someday or not. We've, we've kind of gone back and forth in talking about what's appropriate. But I, I have, I have mixed feelings for the reasons that have already been stated. I think the historical artifacts that we have need to be stored. We've got, and there's so many things that the, the design that I think tentative has been done, at least at some level, has been useful. You know, it's taken the project forward a little bit. But I am concerned that we keep finding with, with the public that they're not necessarily motivated to get this done. And I am concerned about that. So I don't know, I, I guess I'd like to know a little bit more about personally from, from staff about where where that funding is from the historical foundation standpoint, whether they've done any more work. Because that's a lot of, you know, it's a lot of money. We put that, we put what $60,000 in before. I don't know where the money has gone and what it, what it's produced and why $200,000 is necessary to take it the next step. So I think we need more justification to be able to take it forward. I'm not ready to completely kill it, but I, I think we need more information to see if it's appropriate.
Director Nemec.
Thank you, Mayor Stolzman and Council Sharon Nemec, Director of Library and Museum Services. So I want to be clear that we did have a contract with an architecture firm for the 165. That contract was ended at the beginning of COVID because we just couldn't do the community outreach that we felt like was really important as part of that project. That community outreach was going to let the community know how important this building really is to us. So the museum's mission is to collect, preserve and provide access to the history of Louisville. There's no other organization actively doing that. And our job is really to provide, to be a trusted repository in the community for that history. And if we lose it, we never get it back. So in my mind, we need to have storage that meets archival standards, which we don't really have now. We're doing okay, but we're not doing great. We're running out of storage as Councilmember Fahey mentioned. We are going to get some offsite climate-controlled storage eventually. Again, climate-controlled storage at a public facility is not the same. It doesn't meet archival standards necessarily. A three or four-degree temperature fluctuation in a 24-hour period can degrade your historical items, paper, photographs and other artifacts. So to me, our job is really to preserve the material and cultural history of Louisville for future generations. And this building is what's going to allow us to do that. In my mind, and I, I know it may sound like I'm overstating it, this isn't an amenity. This is a necessity for this community to create a building where we are sure that that, our, our history is stored for future generations, where people can come in. They don't have to sit at that table at the Jaco store if they want to do some research. There's a reading room where it's, it's also climate-controlled and we have all the fancy things, the white gloves and, and you can handle that material in a way that helps preserve it. So I feel like this is an important, and I understand that there will be costs to building it and cost, ongoing costs for maintaining and, and operating the facility. But I also think it's, it's critical to preserving the history of Louisville. So if you have any questions.
Councilmember Lay, does that answer your question?
I think it, it does. And I, I think she raises a good point that in some respects, this is, this is one of those issues where just taking sort of public opinion and a poll doesn't quite get at, at the issue that Louisville history is really important. And it's not necessarily something that everybody is going to appreciate, but it is sort of part of what we do as, as a government is to help that to happen. And I understand the passion behind it. I really do get it. And I served as a liaison to the historical commission or at the very beginning. And I know that they're, they feel pretty strongly about this too. I, am I right that when you say the, the contract was canceled, the 165, is that? So are you asking in some measure for that to be restored plus 35? Is that?
Yes, that's exactly right. And we added a little bit because what we discovered when we met with the original architecture firm that we had engaged was that community engagement is really expensive. And I feel like part of what we're doing with this, it's not just schematic design, but it's informing the community about what this project is about and why it's so important. So that community engagement piece feels like a big deal, but it's really expensive. It requires a lot of staff time of our contractor.
Yeah, and I guess that, that makes a difference to me, what you just said, because we've already thought enough of this to allocate the 165. And so, and I, you know, I'd be willing to take a flyer for the extra money to see if, if there is that kind of public support. I mean, I really wish that we could get a few people who believe very strongly in this to commit huge, you know, some serious funds behind it. But that's a separate issue and, you know, this might be an intermediate step. So I support that. I, I appreciate your explaining that. Thank you.
Councilmember Dickinson.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, it's kind of hard. I sort of agree with everyone, even though there's disagreement, which is always fun. You know, what I, what's very clear to me is I do not want to spend $200,000 on something that's never going to be built. That's a, that's a, that's an absolute waste of money to, to spend $200,000 on something we know we're not going to build. So the question is, what, is that true? You know, are, are we absolutely not going to build this building? And I don't, I obviously don't know the answer to that. I think that there's some, you know, there, I think there is a possibility that this is something we decided is important. And we fund somehow between all the different possibilities we you know, I'm, in general, I'm in support of.
I'm not sure if it's just on my side, but I'm losing Councilmember Dickinson. Anyone else having the same problem?
I just got rid of my video. Maybe that'll be better. Is that any better?
Yep, we can hear you now.
Okay, sorry about that. Yeah, so just go back a little bit, but, but I'm in support of a $200,000 investment in us getting the right information to be able to move forward with an important project. Because I do think this is, it's sort of, it's the kind of thing that were it to exist today, it's something we'd be very proud of and, and we would say like, well, of course that was necessary. It's this great public building. It's a great resource for kids and for the community and all the same. Of course, we love having it. You know, if you ask me, should the city spend $10 million to build it? That's, that's a little tough. But I think at this moment, I can still support a $200,000 investment in seeing what the scope is and creating an image that can then be marketed and then trying to find those interesting funding sources. So I am, I am, I think, similar to Councilmember Lay. I'm torn. I liked what I was hearing from Councilmembers Lipton and Maloney and also from Deb. And I just think that, yeah, I would, I would fall on the side of leaving it in and, and seeing where, where we go from it.
Thanks, Councilmember Dickinson. So I'll just add my voice at this point. So I guess I just have a different take on the history and how we've gotten to here. So I felt like we've spent money on a design and plan that was supposed to be a tool that then could be used to increase community interest in the project. So I guess I don't fully understand why the plan that we've already put forward and the design we've already done can't be utilized to get this, in this communication out to the rest of the community about this importance of this. Because I, starting, I sort of am taking the practical view that I think Councilmember Dickinson was kind of laying out. And that is if there's no ability to put together, you know, $10 million to fund this, then spending $200,000 on this staff is disingenuous and it's a waste of money. So I just, I, I don't fully understand why we can't use the design that we've already, the money we've already invested in and designed if the whole point of it is to get community excitement and interest around it. I think in any case, you know, councils consistently said we need to pay for adequate storage, appropriate artifact storage. So in any case, we've said to do that. And if we're going to build this building, it's not going to happen for several years anyway. And so in any case, so I think there's no disagreement there. We all agree the artifacts need to be stored properly. I just, I don't believe that we have any intention to spend the $10 million. And so I think it leads people to believe that we're going to put money in that we're not. So I think we should use the, the building drawings we have to get community excitement. And the champions of the project should take those around and get more champions and get them to sign up as members of the museum and start to build a coalition that I think would be necessary to do a project like this. I also, you know, this last point I'll bring up, it maybe isn't, I haven't fully structured how I should appropriately say this in my brain, so I apologize. But, you know, we're focusing a lot on diversity, equity and inclusion. And our museum focuses a lot on one period of time and history. And so, you know, I think if we are going to spend a lot of money or resources on the museum, I would want to see us do something where we recognize a broader extent of the history of Louisville and the people who have lived on this land, whether it was named Louisville or not at the time. So I just, you know, I'm just not sure building a shrine to the last, you know, 100 years is the approach. So I'm just not sure that this is even the right approach or path. So I just, I struggle with this particular one and I, I would be supportive of removing it. Councilmember Brown.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate it. I think this is, I agree with you on the storage issue. I think if, if the reason that we're building a $10 million building is for storage, I think there's another solution that's far less, far less costly. I'm, I, I think your comments about the full history of this area that we call Louisville are, are really important. And, and I do think that, you know, if we have designs that we have developed previously and we're trying to engage the community and let them know how important our history is, then we should use those designs. And I could probably be supportive of a much smaller contract if it's just about community engagement. But redoing work that we've already done doesn't seem much, seem, seem like much help.
Now, I always mean, we've all had a chance to talk once on this topic and it sounds like there's some division. And so if folks focus their comments on this next round of comments toward reaching some sort of consensus or at some point, we might just have to take a vote on this one. Councilmember Fahey.
Thank you. Yes, I'd like to address a couple of issues that were brought up. The most recent being the EDI issue. The museum has in fact been doing extensive research on the Native American history and also on the ethnic issues, race issues from the more recent path in like the 40s, 50s, 60s. And so they are doing that research, but there is nowhere to actually display that information that they've accumulated so far. They are doing the pop-up park in the back. And at that pop-up park, there's going to be a display of what they've come up with so far in researching the history of other ethnicities that have lived in the Louisville area. Not just Louisville proper, but the whole area. There's a lot of issues around the Japanese presence here during World War II, the black influence and/or lack thereof during the whole racial riot issues in the 50s and 60s and even before. And the other issue I want to break up is the fundraising. The Senior Foundation, or sorry, the History Foundation and the museum and, and the Preservation Commission have all expressed interest in raising funds through their efforts to raise money to, for the construction of the building and also to raise interest in the building. It's, I just can't emphasize enough the importance of maintaining our history. And as Mayor mentioned, the whole history, not just the part that's been emphasized for the last 20 or 30 years, but are all of our history. And they are in the process of collecting and preserving that. So I just want to say it's, it would be a fabulous resource if it was built and preserved.
Thanks, Councilmember Fahey. Councilmember Lipton.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know where to start. I have no idea where $10 million came from. I hope I didn't throw that out and poison the conversation. Councilmember Maloney did. But you know, you know, it strikes me, this council really doesn't have the benefit in the history of this program and this project. And, you know, we, I, I think there was some program planning done and maybe that needs to be looked at again and perhaps, you know, revised based on what people think the program needs to be in the future. And the technology has changed and, you know, there's a lot of things that have changed since we did that original program plan, which I think goes back now five years. And I think that the reason we decided to go from conceptual design, which is, I think, what we already have to schematic design, which would cost now another $200,000, was because we agreed that we have been doing such a deficient job of cost estimating projects that it was important to get more detail in terms of what the project might cost, you know, prior to, you know, going to the next level of design, which would be design development. So I think we, and we were very concerned because we had been in this position before with other projects. That we say, oh yeah, we'll, we'll fund a project for a certain amount. It sounds great, let's do it. And then, you know, as the project evolves and we go further in design, we find we are at times multiples off. And then we were under pressure to backfill the difference because we got so far into projects that we couldn't get out of them. So the reason, I believe, now that I recollect, we kind of said, okay, we might want to consider doing schematic design. So we didn't get in that situation. So we would know pretty much what this thing would cost. And then the foundation and the, you know, can go fundraise and the city could, you know, consider. And then the foundation and the, you know, can go fundraise and the city could, you know, consider a tax for it or, you know, just fund it out of the capital projects. I I think would be, you know, my record, you know, this is obviously is not going to be my problem. My 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 recommendation to you all is that you kind of spend a little time going over the history of the project again. Look at the program plan. Look at the conceptual design. Try to get a sense, you know, from what the community might be able to give you about whether there's interest in it and whether, you know, the needs have changed. You know, are we looking at a storage facility? Are we looking at a visitor's center? Are we doing both? I mean, I think it would be good to go back to the foundational documents that have already been developed. And I think this council should do that before allocating more money to move it forward. And if you decide to move it forward, that's great. But you but make that decision based on, you know, the information that we've already developed over the last five or six or seven years. So if you don't pass the money tonight, it like, you know, you've all been saying there is money available, you know, in the budget that could be allocated for this, you know, even mid-year. So but I would suggest going back in time and looking at what you've already done with the project before you make the commitment to go to the next step.
Thanks, Councilmember Lipton. Councilmember Lay?
What you said earlier, Mayor, was let's focus on kind of moving this to sort of some kind of conclusion. I think what Councilmember Lipton just suggested is is a good idea. I think it gives also an opportunity for at least a little bit of public input on this, which I think actually is really important. Because I know that in the past, there have been changes. There there have been decisions made that people felt kind of caught them off guard. And I'm not suggesting that we're catching anybody off guard necessarily, but I think having that a little bit of extra input, especially if the decision ultimately is not to allocate the money, then I think it's certainly worth it to to permit that. I think the second thing is, excuse me, that the only thing, there's only two things that have changed since we allocated money from before. One is that, as the director said, there's a little there's a little bit of extra money for public engagement. And two is COVID-19. Because the money, you know, 165,000, I think, was allocated already. So, you know, is there something special about? You know, I mean, I understand the desire to, at any given point, make the right decision at that point. We didn't spend it. That doesn't mean we have to spend it again. But I think there there is, as Councilmember Lipton said, some history behind why we made that decision. We should at least revisit that. And and I think that's what we owe folks. I think to some of the other points that have been made, I I think absolutely that the the museum is not focused. It has been focused. I agree very much on a certain period of history. It's not only focused on that. I can't imagine it doing being focused on that solely in the future. Just that. But that's a, I think, and in some respects, I think it's a programmatic issue. But I also think that this issue of of storage and all that, I think you'd see in the history that that is simply providing storage for things is not going to be enough. It it's kind of a waste of time just accumulating stuff that you're never going to ever have a chance to really display or keep track of. So I think I I would encourage the approach that that Councilmember Lipton is suggesting. And then we make a decision. And if we have to vote on it, we have to vote on it.
So I just want to put out a potential path to accomplish that. So we have a work plan that doesn't include this additional discussion. And we are crunched for time with our work plan items maybe not getting done. So I would ask council members if they would be willing to commit an additional special meeting outside of our normal Tuesday nights to have this discussion. Because there's just not capacity on our work plan to do it within our normal Tuesday schedule. I saw a couple thumbs. I saw a finger. Is that a thumb up? Or was that a I wanted to talk? Oh, thumbs up, okay. Not that finger, sorry. Just a different one. Okay, so there's general consensus that we want to have a special meeting sometime before budget adoption about just this topic so that we can understand more about it. And so I'll ask the city clerk to find time on our calendar and time that Sharon and Bridgette would or Director Nima check in. They can be able to take us through some of the history on this and, you know, what the needs are going forward. City Manager Davis, is that enough direction on this topic?
Yes, thank you.
Mayor Proton Maloney?
I'm fine talking about this, having an additional discussion. I think, you know, Counselor Lipton, you know, brought up an approach that makes sense. And and we talked about public input. I don't know if we can accomplish this in this timeframe because I would like to see public input that commits taxing themselves to pay for the construction, whether it's $10 million or not. I believe it'll be closer to that than it will be to the numbers we've seen before. But I I guess I'm I'm still stuck on, you know, how are we going to fund this? And if we have a funding mechanism and the citizens are willing to do that, then we could do a poll that would answer that question, just like we've done polls for other tax initiatives. But that suggests that that's a crunch for getting it done for this cycle.
I think the the reason I was trying to put it in this context is to understand whether or not we're leaving this money in the budget for 2022. So I don't think we're trying to answer the entire question that you laid out, but just Councilmember Lay, I think, put forward that he wouldn't want to remove it from the budget without some more public input on whether we should remove this piece from the budget. So I think that having one additional public meeting on just this topic affords the opportunity, Councilmember Lay was talking about, but it obviously does not afford the opportunity that you're talking about for public engagement around the larger question of can we afford that? So if you would have put forward a substitute motion or a different plan forward, that's perfectly appropriate as well.
Okay, I I guess my substitute motion would be that we put it, put this on our work plan for 2022. But this this discussion will include some type of significant public input on funding the construction.
So I just want to clarify for the budget, for the context of the budget tonight, you would propose removing the item from the budget and then having a discussion in 2022 about whether or not to include it.
Yes.
Are folks supportive of that path forward? I see one thumb up, two thumbs up. Councilmember Lay?
Yeah, I mean, I look. I mean, I can't. What I would say about this is that I I think what Councilmember Proton Maloney is talking about is a bigger, bigger deal, and I'm not sure we need that. I think, you know, we may learn quite a bit in the next, you know, in the special meeting that I think was proposed about what that looks like. We might then decide that it's worth getting a lot more public input. But I, you know, I think it's really important to frankly, put the people on the spot who we expected to to move this forward, to ask them where that stands. And, you know, then we can make a decision about whether it's it's worth funding and then going forward. But I don't I don't feel really strongly. I'm not gonna I'm not gonna throw myself in front of the bus. But I I'm wondering whether Proton's proposal may be a little too ambitious in some respects.
Mayor Proton Maloney?
I I'm not going to throw myself under the bus either. You know, it's 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 one of those things where if we're gonna, you know, if we're gonna spend $200,000, and I'm not the first one who said this, then that means our intention is to find a funding mechanism. And the funding mechanism, I can only see a path of an additional tax. And so that would be maybe a bigger process where we ask the citizens if they're willing to fund an additional tax to build this. It's the exact discussion that we've had on council since I've been on council since 2015, that we needed that that mechanism. Is that a bigger process? Yes. And that's why I was suggesting that we should do this deliberately and we should do this intentionally and make sure we get the right inputs to make that kind of decision. But to spend $200,000 on schematic drawing for something we don't have a mechanism for funding is concerning. So that's where I'm coming from. You know, all these ways work, so I'm not going to get stuck on how we do this. But we do need to know how we're going to do it if we spend $200,000.
Good point.
Thanks, Mayor Proton Maloney. Councilmember Fahey?
Thank you. Yes, I I think that doing this design is is an important part of finding out whether or not we should put it to the voters for a vote. If it comes in and it's going to cost much more than we anticipate wanting to spend, then we'll decide, no, we're not going to bring it to the vote. But the voters need to know what the actual cost of the construction would be in order to vote yes or no on it. And and another issue that we could bring up is that this could be built as a net zero building as an example for all the other builders in the city on how you could build a zero-carbon construction.
Thanks, Councilmember Fahey. So I don't think we're going to resolve this tonight. So I think the path to have this special meeting to understand this more and then to determine whether we put the money in the budget will help us resolve this. I think everybody's made a lot of good points. And so once we can have that special meeting and then hopefully be able to resolve this for the budget discussion. Thanks, everybody. Any new topics? Well, Councilmember Lipton?
Yeah, there's a few other things on the list I'd like to have some conversation about. I guess the next item on the list is the Front Street Plaza project and I'd like to get a refresher to be reminded exactly what that is. Although I know it's moved to 2023, I I just like to get some more detail, whether it's something you would even want to keep on the list for 2023.
Councilmember Lipton, I'm not sure who the question was directed at. Sorry about that.
Yeah, I'm I'd like to get a refresher on the Front Street Plaza project.
Sure, I just wasn't sure who you would like to answer your question.
Excuse me?
I just wasn't sure who. Councilmember Dickinson?
Hey, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I've killed my video just again for hopes of better connection. My understanding of Phase one and Phase two is to, you know, contemplate a redesign of the Steinbach area in front of the library for more effective use, you know, for instance, during COVID right now, they're holding like storytime in the Steinbach and doing other programming outdoors in that space. And so I think the idea is to look at what other possibilities are to activate that civic space that we have for things like farmers market and the street fair and library and otherwise to see if there's a better configuration and use of that space for our community.
So do we have any cost estimates for what this might turn out to be?
I would I would defer to staff. I don't I don't think we do. I think the idea of this is to look at what those potential things. I mean, if you sort of redesign the exterior of the library, for instance, to incorporate like a stage on that side, that would be a lot of money. If you just, you know, reorganize some of the structure. I mean, I think you you could do lots of different things. You could have, you know, public restrooms there, which, as we know, costs, you know, millions of dollars. So depending on what we actually were to go through, I mean, I think that the idea with this money is to get concepts and understand what some of the different, you know, layouts could be for a more flexible activated space. But I think the cost estimates would vary wildly based on what you did there.
Yeah, I think this is this is Megan Davis. I'm happy to just provide a little bit of of more context. And then actually, it looks like Kurt has his director corps has his hand raised too. So, you know, we we haven't done any, you know, design for the Phase one of this project, which would be sort of more shorter term improvements that would improve the the streetscape, lighting, flowers and kind of better integrating for pedestrian access. And then the second phase was to do more of an extensive study for for longer term investments or more kind of transportation transformational changes that might occur in this area to make it a more kind of inviting pedestrian streetscape.
So so could we get something in our packet for the next budget meeting? Just so we all are on the same page about what Phase one is and what it gets us. And and then longer term, what the, you know, Phase two would be and also what the cost estimates would be would be for those, you know, doing doing those kind of studies. And I'm assuming it really doesn't get us a whole lot in the way of construction. Are these largely designs that we would be funding?
Well, well, the first the first there are the there is the original CIP form that just sort of describes the concept. And, you know, given that this the the first phase was in 2022, we haven't really done any, you know, designs yet for this. But that that first phase was really intended to be those more temporary pieces. So I don't know if, I mean, I think Kurt can speak to any ideas that they have initially discussed for this, for that first phase. And then the second phase was really for design for longer term. So there actually were going to be sort of temporary improvements put in place in that first year. And then the creation of kind of a plan and a vision for longer term improvements. Kurt, I don't know if you have anything to add to that.
Yeah, I would just add that what everyone has said is correct. And because the phase, the timing of this, this idea came up. And in addition, we had Front Street and I think Spruce Street in the upcoming CIP for street work. And so that kind of sets up the timing where the the visioning and then the implementation of this project maybe is sooner than maybe you would have imagined because of the street work timing. For instance, if you wanted to do like a pavilion thing where the street and the sidewalk are at the same level, then you would do that at that time. So Phase one was like, as interim city manager said, stuff that you can do more temporary and faster to provide a visible result and see how it goes. And then Phase two was more of longer term vision and incorporation into that street program project, if that's what the council prioritizes.
So is there a community engagement component to all of that?
There absolutely should be. And as Megan alluded, we hadn't gotten that far. But yeah, this should be visioned through a public process in the community. And then that should be compiled into some sort of cost program for you all to decide how big or how small it is based off the input. And then it should be incorporated into that CIP in coordination with the street work.
Councilmember Brown?
Thank you, Mayor. Maybe the interim city manager can help me here. I I feel like I'm getting into jumping into the middle of a conversation on this particular project. I don't remember council giving specific direction about like that we wanted to specifically reimagine the space, potentially close a street. You know, I'm not necessarily opposed to any of those things, but I am but I am trying to try to understand sort of where this came from. Is this was this something in last year's budget that we talked about? Did we have a specific vote on this? Like, where where is the where is the proposal coming from?
Can you hear me? I'm sorry. I think I Yes, we can. We can. I think I unmuted myself. Yeah, no problem. It's hard to it's hard to remember all these CIP discussions. So this was has been included in the six-year 21 through 26 CIP budget, which means that when you all developed the budget in 2020, this was a part of that package. And so I kind of see what page it's on, but it's one of the original CIPs. It's page 82 of the CIP packet. So and that was a part of the originally approved 2021, 22 budget. The discussions that we had around this occurred during that time. And city council included this as one of the CIP project in that 21 through 26 Capitol Improvement Plan.
What kind of, thank you, city manager. I appreciate that. What kind of, thank you, city manager. I appreciate that clarification. What, what kind of direction did we give to staff at that time? In terms of, you know, the scope, it seems like, you know, from what Councilmember Dickinson was saying, or maybe what Director Kaur was saying, it seemed like this could be anything from some nice streetscape improvements with some flowers to like blowing up the front of the library. You know, what, did we give any direction? Sort of scope and potential cost of a project like this?
You know, I don't recall any direction around sort of, you know, what the potential or anticipated outcomes in terms of kind of scope and scale could, could have been for that Phase two. Kurt might remember some more specifics, but I think the idea was to really look at what the possibilities might be there. And maybe come forward with some options of, you know, alternatives of potentially different, you know, levels of improvements that could be made there.
Yeah, I remember the conversation. It was pretty vague. It was more like, hey, let's brainstorm this. We'd like to do something there. And we took that guidance and put a sheet together. It was a a typical quick city council turnaround. Hey, we're going to meet again in a couple of weeks. So let's, let's put a sheet together and put it in there. So yeah, not a lot of thought yet. But it's possible to give it thought without spending a lot of money to help set up the bookends and pieces for you all.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Mayor Protem Maloney.
You know, this is one of those interesting ones where we're talking about these phases one and two. And they're, you know, I view them very differently. You know, Phase one is actually talking about doing things and making some street, you know, scape improvements. And we know we have things like the street fair and we have the farmer's market and so forth on Front Street. And so this would maybe put in some more sophisticated streetscapes to enable some of those things without using temporary barriers and so forth. You know, that may or may not be a good thing to do. I don't know. But Phase two is, is a long-term plan. Talk about reimagining the space. Maybe even potentially tearing down the Steinbach Pavilion and doing it in a very much different way where there is no street. And you know, it's so, you know, the first one I'm okay with. The second one potentially, depending on the scope of, of what gets designed and interested in it could be a lot of money. And, you know, I feel like this is a similar discussion we just had about capital projects that, you know, we could do something, we could do the first phase, maybe it's 120,000. Second phase, 120,000 is just for the design work. And then we'd be looking at options about what we'd be doing there and, and how much we'd want to invest. So that's, those are very different. You know, the first one I might be interested in. The second one, I'm very much less interested in. Thank you.
Thanks, Mayor Protem Maloney. Councilmember Fahey.
Yes, I think I would kind of go along with the idea of looking into what the possibilities are. But designing it as, you know, closing off Front Street and as Mayor Protem said, turning it into one big plaza. Probably not something I would go for, but the idea of putting, for example, public restrooms or a a year-round water fountain, for example, at the pavilion somewhere, I think would be really advantageous to the city. It would bring people down. And also the flowers, just like we do the flowers on Main Street and the lights at Christmas time on Main Street, bringing people down to the library and the pavilion in a gracious kind of way, I would be very interested in supporting something like that.
Thanks, Councilmember Fahey. So let's see, Councilmember Dickinson, sorry, I didn't see your hand because your video is off. Councilmember Dickinson.
I'll throw my video back up to show my hand. Yeah, I mean, I think for, there are a lot of questions and I think it's hard to answer any of these questions without doing some work. So I think, you know, if if the idea that the seven of us or four of us at least are like, I have no interest in, in seeing any, any changes to that area, then yeah, it's certainly dead in the water for this particular council. But, you know, if we're interested in seeing what the possibilities are on that, in that space. And again, small changes, big changes, what have you, then we have to do something. I mean, I, I can do, you know, my own hand drawings and show that around to people, but I don't think that's going to do us much good, right? I don't, I'm not an architect or anyways, I don't do any of that. So we have to spend some money to get some conceptual ideas of what could be there. And I think it could be a way more interesting space than a parking lot, a pull bar, barn and odd parking lot that we sometimes use as an ice rink, sometimes use as, you know, the street fair tent and sometimes use as sort of an unmarked parking lot for nine months of the year. I think we can do better than what we have down there. And so I think it's worth looking into how to reimagine that space. And it doesn't mean that a street doesn't exist there. It doesn't mean that the Steinbach Pavilion is torn down. But I don't know what it means and we won't know what it means unless we do put some work into some concepts and see if there's any interest from any of us to, to make some changes. So again, this isn't until 2023 anyway, but you know, I, I just, I, you know, I, I'm one of the people that has been pushing for this from 2019 and the joke I made with the mayor was if I, if I start talking about in 2019, do you think we can maybe do something by 2027? So that's my only goal. I'm just hoping that we have a conversation about this and it's on the radar and we can maybe look at some possibilities. And it doesn't look like anything's going to happen anytime soon, but I would like to keep it on the 2023 CIP to at least as a bookmark to say this is something we might want to look into more in the future.
Thanks, Councilmember Dickinson. Director Kaur.
Yeah, I just wanted to add, I think, additional thought that hasn't been talked about. The Steinbach has been focused on, but this area is an active area due to the library. And there is also desire to activate the street around that kind of dead corner in the library above the parking garage. And that could take like shade structures or some sort of landscaping to better do that. So you know, you have people that want to be in a place, but it gets too hot or too cold. And so in addition, this will look at that stuff. That's all. So there is visioning that's in need.
And, and just so folks know that, part of the work is a separate CIP that I don't think anybody brought up to talk about, but I, it looks like that's in there for next year for the library work. Any other discussion on this one? So it sounds to me like there were some really different ideas, but there's consensus on sort of leaving the phases in there and then talking about sort of the Phase two stuff in more detail as a group before that gets executed on. Is that the general consensus that I heard from everyone? All right. And any other topics people wanted to bring up? My screen is now moving really slow, so I wonder if you all can hear me. Okay, good. You can. Great. So there was one topic I have written down we didn't get to, and that's just, I kind of keep track of the various things that that people bring up. And one, we continue to talk about an EV transition plan for electric vehicle transition plan. And so I think it's just something to flag for staff that that's something that we need so that we can understand what those costs will be associated with that over the next 10 years. Recognizing that, you know, we might not have bandwidth to do it right away or right now, but just that that's something that should be on the radar and that we should look at incorporating in next year's budget. Councilmember Lay.
Yeah, and I didn't have anything to say about that particular thing, although I agree with it.
Just so before we move on to the next, to your next topic, is there just general agreement around that? All right. So there's consensus around that. Thanks. And Councilmember Lay, next topic.
This, this may be out of order, and if it is, we could raise it some other time. My, my dog has a request, which is to consider some additional dog parks in the city. We've, we've raised that in the past a little bit. And I'm, I'm half joking, but I'm not. We have, we have an awful lot of usage of our own big dog park and it's been great, but I think it's not enough. And we've talked about doing some dispersal of that. I want to keep that idea alive in some manner or means. And I really need to go back and tell my dog something tonight. So I can get him out.
Thanks, Councilmember Lay. I think that's a really good one for us to all think about how we bring that forward in next year's budget discussion in the two year, just because it will take a big capital investment, but it's something good to put out there as an identified community need. And I'll just tack on to it that, you know, we've heard a lot from people around PerkSpace on the south end of town. So maybe there's a public-private partnership that could be entered into with the Ascent Church property where we could contribute to redeveloping part of the parking lot as a dog park or something like that. I I just think we should think about, you know, where we have gaps and if there are multiple gaps that we can address with one project. So obviously those ideas aren't something that we can address tonight or in this year's budget, but definitely things we should keep on the radar and figure out how to bring through the boards and get feedback on and work to incorporate in a future budget cycle. Other folks, we'll pause here. Things seem to be slowing down and see, I really appreciate all the members of the public that have logged on. It's your opportunity to tell us what you'd like to tell us. So please raise your hands to let us know what you'd like to tell us. And you'll have three minutes and in your time of field, please tell us your name and your address. And then anything you'd like to tell us. First, we have Larry Donner. Hi, Larry.
Hi, can you hear me now?
Yes, we can.
Okay, so I want to thank council for the discussion on, on trying to fix the, the state of our parks, street cape, streetscapes and open space. It's my understanding that what you've asked for is a plan for the 2022 budget discussion on how we might begin to fix this problem, which means at best work would begin in 2023. I'd just like to remind staff and council that Louisville is in a hole right now. After years of neglect, the plan that comes forward for budget discussion next year really needs to have a realistic costing of the total replacement of multiple irrigation systems and the total replacement of the dead dying trees, shrubs and turf that we're experiencing right now. I think you're all, you all understand, you've gotten my email. You understand I'm frustrated with where we are. I understand this didn't develop in one year. So I just want to say we need a realistic plan and we really do need some money put in this so we can fix the problem. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Donner. Next, we have Maggie Harper.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can.
All right. Oh, yeah. So I'm Maggie Harper. I live at 1157 Harper Lake Drive. And I'm on the board for the Grove at Harper Lake. And I know you all have gotten my emails and specifically stating some of the things, especially along the Harper Lake and Washington street corridors that need to be worked on. Just, you know, want to make you aware, we have the Grove as well as the HOAs from the two surrounding neighborhoods. I've been in contact with a number of people and I think consensus is is definitely there that the city needs to do something to dig out of the hole we've created. And in doing that, I hope the, hope the council makes some urgently needed repairs and develops or brings forth some funds for the urgently needed repairs for things that are currently dying. Being turf, bushes and trees. And then the other thing I really enjoyed hearing you say is you're going to come up with a plan. And I would urge that the city would have a very comprehensive five to 10-year plan as we move forward. So that each year we're seeing some projects because things are going to need to be replaced, not just repaired. And I've heard you saying that. And, you know, also with the staff shortages, I would urge the city to get creative. I, in my business, have had a number of staff shortages this year and getting creative, reaching out to independent contractors to maybe piecemeal ones that can work at in pieces of the city versus trying to have, you know, just one contractor. So I appreciate all y'all are doing for our city. So thank you to the mayor and the council for what you're doing. And I look forward to moving forward on this project.
Thank you. Any other comments from members of the public tonight? All right, not seeing any. That takes us back over to council. And I just wanted to clarify for Mr. Donner that we were clear to staff that we did not want to wait until the 2022 budget to adopt improvements. And so staff is supposed to bring us back a plan right away. So just to clarify that for, for folks watching. Any other topics council wants to bring up around this tonight? All right. And I sort of summarized as we went. City Manager Davis, do you need me to resummarize all the topics we covered tonight? Or are we good to go? I think I got everything. If you want to, if you want to run through them, I can double check. All right, so on the same page. All right. So we're leaving the $1.5 million in for the paving budget. The ARPA funds, we're going to try to program to lost revenue so we can move them into the general fund and then cover the gap on the capital projects fund with a general fund transfer. We're looking for staff to come back with a plan for routine maintenance on trails and trees. And if there's an upfront plug of money that they need to address parks maintenance issues, which includes streetscapes and open space. Some folks would like just the info resent on ARPA requirements that we got back in July. We're going to have a special meeting scheduled on the museum to talk about that topic. In a future budget year, we'd like to see EV transition plan. There's going to be information mailed out about the regional workforce development SDBC. And there's going to be information mailed out about what the projects are in the Rec Center Construction Fund so that we can better understand those things. That is what I have on my sheet. And sorry, they went sort of out of order because I went, I ran out of space on my sheet and then had to jump back. Did I miss a topic? That's everything I have as well. In addition, the Front Street and leaving the phases in and talking more about it in 2023. Thank you. Yep. Perfect. Did anybody feel like we missed anything out in the summary? All right. And it's not our last budget meeting. So if we did leave something out, there's time to put it back in. So I really appreciated all the engagement tonight. City Manager Davis, were you looking for anything else from us this evening? I think that's good direction on those specific areas. Director Watson, is there anything else that we're missing at this point?
I don't believe so. Not for me. Thank you.
Okay, I guess the one thing that just came to mind is there was the proposal to change the to change the carryforward allocations. And since there wasn't much discussion on it, I just assumed there was consensus around that. And so I just want to confirm that that's the case. Yes. Okay. So just confirming that that was the case. All right. Anything else from anyone? All right. Seeing then. Thank you so much, everybody, for all your efforts and we'll see you next time. Thank you.